We'll go ahead and call to order the Ford County Commission meeting. This is meeting number 2022-11. And up first, we have a prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. And we have Pastor Albert Schrock of Bible Baptist Church here.
Let's pray. Our heaven and father, we come this day, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for that moisture you've given us, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for our city, Lord, our county, Lord. We ask that you be with this meeting, Lord, today. And I thank you for the commissioners, Lord, who work with us, Lord. And I pray that you guide them, Lord, give them direction, Lord, and that you may bless our county and our city, Lord. We thank you for it in Jesus' name.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is approval of meeting minutes 2022-09, credit card statement, and a proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week and National Train Day. So I say we start off with National Tourism Week. If you guys want to come forward. Thank you.
Okay, so I will start with National Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas travel has a positive effect on Ford County and the state of Kansas. Kansas is economic prosperity, whereas tourism is an economic driver, business recruitment tool, and a building block for state and community pride for Ford County. And whereas travel to and through Kansas provides significant annual economic benefits for the state, generating more than $9.4 billion in direct and indirect business sales and incurring $6 billion spent directly by travelers. And whereas key indicators from the 2020 Economic Impact of Tourism in Ford County report show that leaders in the community are support in the importance and growth of tourism throughout Ford County, with visitors spending $113 million in Ford County, which ranks eighth among all counties in the state. And whereas travel in Ford County generated $10.8 million occurring to state and local taxes, with the two largest categories of spending being recreation at $31 million and food and beverages at $26.9 million here in Ford County. And whereas the travel industry is the 12th largest employer in the state of Kansas and the fourth largest employer in Ford County, directly supporting more than 53,000 jobs statewide and more than 952 jobs here in Ford County, which is one out of every 15 non-farm jobs. And whereas tourism is a welcoming committee for capital investment in Kansas. And whereas the travel industry is the heartbeat of our community, businesses, and inviting visitors from all around the globe to enjoy the experiences that only Ford County can offer. And whereas welcoming visitors from near and far has always been and will always be the enduring spirit of the travel industry in Kansas.
Now therefore, I, Chris Boyes, Chairman of Ford County Commission, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th, 2022, as National Travel and Tourism Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Dodge, with the aid of the Convention of Visitors Bureau, will hold a reception on May 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Booth Hill Museum with complimentary historic trolley tours on that day at 10:30 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. in observation of Travel and Tourism Week. And urge the citizens to join me in a special observant observation with appropriate events and activities. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand this second day of May 2022. Thank you.
Do you want me to do Train Day as well?
Sure, you've got a great speaking voice, so.
I mean, I'd be more than happy to let you read it.
No, feel free. We tend to mess things up pretty good.
Okay, so National Train Day proclamation. Whereas federal and state transportation departments have made expansion of high-speed and intercity passenger rail a top priority in building 21st century national infrastructure. And whereas a healthy freight and passenger rail network is essential to keeping American economy moving efficiently. And whereas Ford County has benefited from the train service on Amtrak's Southwest Chief Route. And whereas Amtrak continues to work with the states on development of the next generation of high-speed and intercity passenger rail trains, which will create good jobs in the United States by resurrect or, bleh, sorry, by increasing the domestic manufacturing base. And whereas during FY 2021, October 2020 through September 2021, Amtrak welcomed aboard more than 12.2 million passengers. And whereas 5,324 passengers boarded or disembarked Amtrak trains in Ford County during FY '19.
Now therefore, I, Chris Boyes, Chairman of Ford County Commission, do hereby proclaim May 14, 2022, as National Train Day. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand this, the second day of May 2022. I show.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the approval of meeting minutes 2022-09, the credit card statement, and these two proclamations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve and set agenda as presented.
I second that. With the motion in seconds, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Up next is approval of claims for payment in the amount of $481,646.82. Has everybody had a chance to review the claims?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented.
All right, with the motion in seconds, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. We're at the part of the meeting now where it's open public comments. So please limit five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting, unless emergency situation does exist. And we have some takers in front of us. Hello, honorable commissioners. This is new landfill director, Rego. Just wanted to take a moment to bring him up here and introduce him.
Good.
You can take the time to tell them a little bit about yourselves, sir.
Rego Alveda, ordered, raised here in Dodge. It's a great honor of mine to be able to take this director position. I have high hopes to do my best job out there, even though it is trash.
That's awesome. Perfect.
Welcome to the county.
Yeah.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are you calling good luck?
I asked.
Okay. All right, we'll move right along. No unfinished business. No legal counsel.
It is all funny.
Yeah. We'll go straight to the county minister's report.
Gentlemen, the first item I have on the admin report is for Ford County engineer John Hobbie-Woxwell, Kirk Michael.
Welcome, John.
Good afternoon. I feel like I should have been prepared with some jokes or something. Unfortunately, I'm not.
Yeah.
Just talking engineering today.
I'll take it.
Not much use of my engineering, sorry. Well, a report of engineering activities for the last month in Ford County. Working on, or I should say, the developer of the Iron Star Wind Farm is working on closing out that project. And they're down to just a few intersection repairs on county roads as far as finishing up things that are county-related. There's three intersections on Saddle Road that need some milling inlay to patch some damages that was done to the pavement. They did send an email back last week that they're working with APAC to set up a date for APAC to come in and make those repairs. So hopefully, in the near future, you'll be able to take care of and wrap that project up. Quick update on the Highway 50 expansion between Dodge City and Simron. Gray County highway contractors have started moving some dirt and installing erosion control devices last week. This week, I was told that their plan is for the, or at least one of the concrete box contractors to move in and start construction on concrete box culverts in Gray County. As far as when work will start in Ford County, that's not yet been determined quite yet. But it will happen soon enough. The road improvements related to the Helmer Cheese Plant project. Kirk Michael is working on developing the two miles of paving improvements on the outlaw and the roads there by 56 Highway 283. We just turned in our 50% plans to KDOT with intention of finishing plans late in the summer. Is still bidding those projects this winter for construction in 2023. And in the intersection, KDOT is working with another consulting firm for the intersection improvements at 56 and 283 highways. And they're working on setting up stakeholder in a public meeting to discuss proposed improvements and solicit feedback from the stakeholders and public. You should be getting some information from KDOT in the near future, but it looks like about two weeks from now is when they're planning to have those meetings. The low water crossing on 127 Road between Kettle and Marshall. Kirk Michael's working on finishing the final plans for that project. And the next step then will be to send in the permits to the Corps of Engineers and Department of Agriculture. We'll have those ready for Chris probably in a couple of days. Get those over to him to review. And at least the core permit requires, or excuse me, the Department of Ag permit requires a payment from the county. Still have to get a check and get that sent in. Usually about 30 days or so, maybe 45, we get those permits back. And then we'll be ready to start looking towards dating that project. And I'll make sure to get final plans before we get to that point as well. And see what the final concept was, where we ended up at. The paved road reclamation on 102 and 113 Road. I've mentioned before that Terracan is working on an alternative pavement design utilizing cementated subgrade, geosynthetic fabric support, crushed stone, and then asphalt pavement on top of that. I got those numbers last week and put together the preliminary cost estimate for 102 Road and using the design they provided me. This would be going with the 30-year pavement design, which had four inches of asphalt on top. I came up with the preliminary estimate of just shy of $2.6 million for that option. When we turned in the cost share application to KDOT, and those numbers were based off of the, during the reclaiming process, we were at just over $2.1 million for doing the reclaiming process. And obviously, the costs are different. An increase for this other alternative design, which is a more robust design, and I would say perhaps less risk potential for exhibiting the cracking that we've had out there. And I talked with Chris about that cost number. And Road Bridge doesn't have that much money in its budget at this time. So we talked about two different alternatives as well. We can caveat that a little bit. The Road Bridge doesn't have that much budget. We did apply for the KDOT cost share for requesting $800,000. KDOT has now said they're going to announce those, the awarded projects, on May 24, about a month later than we were hoping. So if the county were to get selected about $800,000, then it probably would work out financially to do 102 Road. If the cost share is not awarded, Chris presented the idea of maybe shifting and doing a section of 113 Road there from the shop, going from Comanche Street North first, because that's about just a mile or maybe a little less. Would be less costly to fit within the budget. And then just kind of putting, just changing the order of things a little bit so we can continue to work on 102 Road. And look at maybe different alternatives for a less expensive pavement section or being able to get the budget amount we need to do 102 Road.
John, between the two options that you considered there, what is, what's the difference in the term of life of the project?
It would be the same term of life, yes. Different construction methodologies.
Okay.
So the one with, the secondary one that I'm talking about today with the geosynthetic fabric that you would lay down and put crushed gravel on that. I've employed that on many designs I've done around different areas of state, and they perform very well. Pretty good comfort level with that design myself as well.
And it's a cost-effective route? Or are they similar?
As far as the construction methodology or?
Just the overall cost of the road itself? Like, when you're putting down like a geo-grain fabric and crushed stone, is there a savings there? A cost savings compared to?
Came in a little higher.
It came in higher, actually. We're performing additional action. So we would be cementing the dirt below, laying down this fabric and putting crushed stones. If the crushed concrete were available, we could use crushed concrete as an alternative and potentially bringing down the prices. It depends on availability and cost that the contractor would bid. It would be a more costly approach, but it would be, like I said, lower risk, I would say, and more robust than the original alternative. Honestly, I think 113 Road has a higher volume of traffic on it. I think it would be probably better suited for the higher volume of traffic than 102 Road, in my opinion.
What's, is, are they about the same length?
The 113 Road, we're only going to talk about doing really half of that, Comanche to the north, so it would be not quite half as long, or a little over half the distance as the 102 Road project. 113 Road is full lane for just a short stretch going to the north.
I guess I didn't think about it being wider.
So we're figuring about, say, a mile and a half, a two-lane road equivalent, where 102 Road is closer to three miles.
Three miles, two lanes.
Yeah.
Sure.
So the cost per mile would be the same, but the total cost would be less than 113 Road because it's a shorter distance.
Okay.
I would also say 113 Road, since that was already done not too many years ago, the ditch is raised, and maybe less dirt work involved to bring the ditches back up to match the road because they're wide or flatter than just 102 Road's pretty steep.
Yeah.
Fair amount of dirt work involved just to bring those up.
And I think you had talked about maybe cutting the road.
Bringing it out.
Or a flat plain.
Half a foot or so on the 102. 113 Road, I don't think we even need to do that because it's already created, built to the degree we need it.
Only drawback I have with that is kicking the can down the road on 102. And we're not going to see costs do anything but go up. I, you know, so we do 113 now and try and figure out a budget for 102 the next time around, and it's 3 million instead of 2.6. That's my.
Never know. And I forgot to mention one thought on 102 Road as well, with the Highway 50 project getting started out there. The contractor, that would be, cost construction is the crime. They do cementated subgrade, and they're also doing asphalt paving on Highway 50. They're not going to start any of that work probably until next year. Would that provide the cost savings if they were to, same thing, do the works? But they might bid on it since they're going to be right there.
Will there be a savings there?
Possibly.
Could they do it first and tie in to what they're doing?
I don't know that they would. Just don't know if they're going to even have their asphalt plant there in time to do 102 Road project. They might, they might do painting on the access roads this year, but probably not anything on the highway itself until next year. I don't know that they would be really in a good position to do anything with 102.
Is that where they're putting their asphalt plant? Is that that corner?
I understand it's just on this side of Simron. But I haven't actually been over to see exactly where it's at.
I saw, I saw them put up a big berm, like a, yeah. I mean, I assume maybe that's where it's at over in Simron. I don't know if they've got one on this county as well.
Sounds like they're just planning on having one closer to Simron.
I think they've got it ironed out in that road, or in that field to the north.
North of the curves there.
Yeah.
Usually, you can haul asphalt pretty easily 30 to 45 miles. And they take the heat. You know, the accident used to be eaten, and obviously, the cost of diesel right now, the shorter the haul, the better.
Yeah.
We'll eat up money in a hurry.
Yeah. Okay.
That sounds like a reasonable approach. I'll continue to work with Terracan and see what other alternatives we might have for 102 Road that are more cost-effective. And then we'll talk with our contractor that's going to be out there as well and try to get a better gauge on their timeline. I think they're still trying to figure that out to certain degree themselves. On this project, it's a three-year construction project for completion. They're going to be there for a while, we know that. And when they're going to do the paving part, they're not really 100% clear on the design.
Okay.
Looking down the old business list on the Off System Bridge 97. Notice I didn't remember they had the location there. You don't have to keep guessing on that.
I appreciate that.
I haven't done any design work on that project yet. We did have the field survey completed. We've got several other bridge projects in the queue, so it'll probably be later in the summer when we fall for it. Get going on that project, and it's not planned to bid until next year. The Jewel Road Reclamation from 2021, from the cracking that we observed. Talked with Terracan last week. They said they have extracted all the cores that they intended to from the pavement that was placed. They have documented and done their informational logs, and now they're shipping them to an independent lab to have analysis done of that. So hoping within a month, possibly next time I'm here, we'll have some information on what they found out.
Okay.
See how fast it goes. Okay, going on the second page of my stuff here on the KDOT and Syntha County Access Road Maintenance Agreement, where the county would take over maintenance of the access roads being constructed in Ford County as part of the Highway 50 14th Expressway Expansion Project. I provided a few comments on this agreement and forwarded on to the county councillor and asked for him to review it. I will need to send it back to KDOT to make a couple revisions and then get it before the commissioners for approval. Have a chance to review it. I told Chris on, I've been listing these KDOT passing lane projects that are coming up in Ford County that were scheduled for August letting. Need to check with KDOT to see if those are still on schedule or if they've been pushed back at all. Make sure that August date's still legitimate. As far as old business, that's really all that I have. I haven't heard any updates on potential wind farm or the Grain Belt Power Line project here in Ford County. The Grain Belt has been talking with some other counties, not Ford, for whatever reason. One thing that Chris wanted me to mention was up here Wednesday, he's been requested to attend a meeting with KDOT and the Burlington Northern Railroad to discuss that river crossing on Garnett Road, just on the east side of Highway 50 there by Spiritville. And talk about the potential of getting signalization placed at that crossing. So there is a little bit of activity moving on that endeavor, which is good to hear. Okay, that's the conclusion of my updates for today. If there's any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen? I would let you know, John, that Grain Belt Power Line, they are getting, we signed contracts with them here the other day on the lease for the easement, so.
Okay.
So they are doing some net work.
Good. I like to be in serious. We've heard a lot of potential wind farm activity construction-wise around the state. There's one proposed west of Kinsley that would go from Edwards County and a little bit into eastern Hodgman County. It sounds like they're, that developer is the same group. I think they did Iron Star, they're going to maybe get started construction on that one this summer. So they're trying to get serious with negotiating a road paving agreement with Edwards and Hodgman County over there.
Are you helping them out?
We are helping them out, yeah. We do a lot of work for both counties. And there's just a lot of counties all over the state that are hearing more, probably of one to two years down the road, potential wind farm construction. But there's a lot of excitement and interest in brewing.
I think what this line goes, and we'll see it happen in the near future.
It sounds like it would likely.
To be close to that terminal. And I think the deal, whatever they commissioned this thing, was that it was supposed to be new generation-type stuff, so.
Yeah, it should open up the door for a bit more when the germs are around. Be prepared.
All right. Thank you, John.
All right, thank you. I'll have to read that for you.
You too. Thank you.
Next item is for Melissa McCoy of the City of Dodge City to present the CFAB.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here today, it's good to see you guys. With a CFAB recommendation for the authorization and the purchase of cameras, camera security system for the Long Branch Lagoon, an amount of $45,891. And giving this to all this afternoon and then to the City Commission tonight. But back in 2021, we started to upgrade the security system at the Long Branch Lagoon and IT installed a few cameras around. But it didn't really provide a lot of security, and they weren't the best system. And they were near the main building and some other places, but didn't really give us adequate coverage. And so with bringing the facility back in-house and looking at just overall kind of both concerns, whether it be with security and ability to kind of deter some crime and violence, we went out and looked for bids for the camera system. Unfortunately, of the two providers that we were working with, only one successfully submitted the system, or a quote for the system. And that was STAR for this amount. And if we approved this, they will have it installed for the start of the season, which is Memorial Day, so coming right up. And as I mentioned, this would just improve our security system for the safety of patrons and staff and help to deter crime and vandalism inside the facility. It would also be helpful in offseason, too, when we sometimes have incidents occur. And so this basically covers everything from the parking lot to the main building, the large slides, the wave pool, the 50-meter pool, and the children's pool area. So all of those places. The other benefit with this system is it is on fiber rather than Wi-Fi, so it's a lot more dependable for what we need. And then we'll be working with our IT department. If approved, we'll be working with the staff and also just helping to follow up to make sure that cameras are always operational and those type of things. So go ahead and open it up and see if you have any questions.
Melissa, I hear we had a significant current problem down there, vandalism or anything like that?
We've had, we've had some. We've had some minor vandalism and things that have happened, both during season and offseason. And then also when incidents do occur at the facility, incidents or accidents, it's good to have that to be able to follow back up on camera footage.
Are any of these holes up or now? I mean, I see.
Yes, some of them are existing or will be on the building. And some of them do have additional holes that are added to them. So I think there is a total of, what do I see? Something like 21 different cameras. So some of those just like are attached to the roof or other areas.
Sure. Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the camera's security system for the Long Branch Lagoon, in an amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars by the city, and the county commissioners asked for his name.
Okay, I'll second that. With the motion second, any discussion on the topic? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, items three, four, five, and six are for Emergency Management Coordinator, Glenn Haskell.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I hope not to take up a whole lot of your time, I'll try to summarize the summaries for these, uh, we will take it one at a time, uh, Ford County Emergency Management Memorandum of Understanding with Dodge State Community College, and it'll be three of those. First one has to do with the Student Activity Center, sometimes referred to as the Dome. This is basically a memorandum of understanding that that can be used as a tornado shelter, and delineates what their responsibilities would be in that, and that includes staffing issue.
Okay. Commissioners, I'd make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Ford County and Dodge State Community College with regards to the student activities shelter.
I second.
With the motion second, any discussion, any questions for plan? Hearing none, call a vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
By the way, all of these have gone through, through legal counsel, so, uh, the second one has to do with the, the same location, uh, in this particular case, it would be for a long-term shelter, and this would be when we're at Cross, we come in and take care of that, but it allows that shelter to then be used for, uh, the purpose of, of housing people who are displaced in a, in a disaster.
All right, I'd make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Dodge City Community College and Ford County in regards to the long-term shelter.
May second.
With the motion second, any discussion, any questions for plan? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
By the way, all of these have gone through, through legal counsel, so, uh, the second one has to do with the, the same location, uh, in this particular case, it would be for a long-term shelter, and this would be when we're at Cross, we come in and take care of that, but it allows that shelter to then be used for, uh, the purpose of, of housing people who are displaced in a, in a disaster.
All right, I'd make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Dodge City Community College and Ford County in regards to the long-term shelter.
May second.
Motion in second, any further discussion on this one? My only question on this one, Glenn, is, um, it seems like when the dome was built, there was no cots or pillows or blankets or things like that that went into the facility? There was kind of a thought process behind having the dome as a?
Right. We toured it recently to try to help figure out where exactly, uh, people should go when the tornado happens, but while we were there, uh, we also visited other locations, and, and right now, there's fifty cots in the facility.
Okay.
Ready to go, we've got another fifty that can be brought in.
Okay. So. I guess on our side, I've never seen that storage area, but that's good to know they're there, you've seen.
They are there, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure you're, you're welcome to take a tour, and.
Yeah.
They can show you that stuff if you'd like.
Yeah. I've been in the building a couple times, I just haven't seen.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate that. All right, gentlemen, I call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May.
The third item is also with Dodge City Community College, and, and it is a memorandum of understanding, basically providing transportation in the event of a disaster, they would provide buses for us if we need to move larger quantities of people from one location to the next.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I'd make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Dodge State Community College and Ford County in regards to transportation services.
May second, Glenn.
All right, with the motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
March 12th, 2020, the pandemic started, uh, we, uh, fell off the cap with, with so many other counties in, in filing a declaration for that, so that we get access funds from the, the state and, and, uh, basically their stockpile for PPE and other things, that personal protective equipment and so forth, that could help, uh, that was extended repeatedly through the process, um, then it was until rescinded by the, by the commissioners. Uh, we heard at the last meeting that it has moved to an endemic state, and because of that, uh, there seems to be no further benefit to the county or stakeholders to allow this to continue unchecked, I, I guess, so the, the request with this resolution is simply to rescind, uh, that state of emergency, that declaration, uh, for the pandemic.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve and adopt Resolution Number 2022-20, terminating the proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency.
I'll second that. With the motion second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point of clarification real quick, this will not change the operations of public health, so even though the declaration goes away, uh, public health employees at the Health Department will continue to investigate, um, COVID-19, uh, as well as all the other, um, enteric diseases and cancers that are reported, so this doesn't change any of that.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I'm, I'm happy to get this thing done. I, I understand the need for the declaration of the emergency, but I really think that these things are supposed to be more of a temporary thing than, than the long-term that we've seen out of this, I think we probably could have done this before we, before now, but, um, but I'm, I'm happy to finally get this closed here.
All right, any other comments? All right, hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, seven, eight, nine, and ten are for Community Corrections Directors, sign the challenge.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
That is, uh, quite a lot of paper there.
I feel pretty important.
Yeah, got your workout in, for sure.
Yes, wasn't able to go to the gym, but I'm figuring that out.
You've got hand truck that you carry around, or?
Yes, yes. Okay, so, it's a lot of information, I recognize that, um, I already did send a summary of each of the four sets of paperwork that I sent you, um, I don't know if we need to go over them.
I gotta tell you, the summary, um, was, uh, I, I don't know why we've missed that for so many years, but that's a blessing, because I think sitting up on our side of the desk, and I shared this with admin, it's, it's, this felt very easy to read, and it was a lot more clear, if that makes sense, on our side, I, I, I would encourage that more, but, yeah, this was nice, so.
Okay, it's a much different format than in years past, and, so I'm hoping that from this point forward, it's going to be a lot easier to maintain, because we're not having to recreate the entire plan year after year, it's now in the database, and so we're just going to be adding to it, so I hope it won't be as cumbersome of a process as it has been.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, and just a note that we have presented all of these to our advisory board, we actually formed a subcommittee to, uh, create the adult and juvenile plans, and so they've definitely had a significant part in creating these, uh, but we had our advisory board meeting up last Tuesday, and these have all been approved and sent out, I'm just here before you to get the approval, so that I can get to the outline handlies and get them submitted to ADOC.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Fiscal Year 23 Adult Comprehensive Plan Grant and Budget.
Note second.
With the motion second, any further discussion on that one? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The second one, the Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Fiscal Year 23 Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Grant and Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Fiscal Year 23 Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Grant and Budget.
I'll second that. And with the motion second, any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then the third item is our reinvestment grant and budget, um, this is specifically to assist with our juvenile programs, it helps cover some staffing, and then allows us to implement some, uh, programming for juveniles based on the needs that we're seeing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Santa Fe Trail Community Corrections Fiscal Year 23 Reinvestment Grant and Budget.
And I'll second that. With the motion second, any further discussion on it? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the fourth item is our FY22 Prevention Program, uh, Third Quarter Progress Report, so just every quarter, we update you, um, in the community and our advisory board, of course, where we're at on our prevention program, so this is the, the truancy programs that we have throughout the district, and, uh, our school that we have, um, and our in-house diversion program that we have, so we're on point for the year, um, we've already met our numbers for the year, we're just wanting to, um, maintain our successful contributions to make those outcomes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the Santa Fe Trails Community Corrections Fiscal Year 22 Juvenile Prevention Program Third Quarter Progress Report.
I'll second that one. With the motion second, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Tony, good luck with the decision.
Thank you.
And with the paperwork.
Next item we have is upcoming meetings, special budget work sessions, May 11th, 2022, starting at 8:30 a.m., Fiscal Year 2023 Budget, Ford County Department Heads presenting. May 16th, 2022, starting at 2:00 p.m., Fiscal Year 2023 Budget, remaining outside requests. Open enrollment for county employee benefits, May 16th and 17th, at the expo. Kansas County Highway Association 2022 Spring Conference, May 16th through the 18th. United Wireless Arena and Boot Hill Casino and Resort Conference. I have nothing further.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion adjourned.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you so much, we've got some signing to do, and then.